Good evening and welcome to the October 16th meeting of the Richmond Common Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer by Councilor Engel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please join me for a moment of silent meditation. Madam Court, please call the rule.
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Jeff Kappa.
Jeff Locke.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Ron Oler.
Here.
And Larry Parker.
Here.
Eight are present.
Councilor Kappa has an excused absence tonight. He's on his way back from California having spent the week with, I think, a new baby.
Woo!
Yay!
Yay!
Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2023.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
If there's no additions or corrections in the minutes of October 2nd, make a motion to need be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes of October 2nd, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have presentations tonight, but they will be done in the context of considering Resolution 20, or 142023, so we will move on to that at this point, and I'll turn it over to the mayor to begin us.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will begin with reciting for our viewing public the memo that was delivered to council members as it relates to this resolution, and then we'll begin our presentation. Members of council, presented for your approval is a resolution of support for the Wayne County Strategic Investment Plan, or SIP, for the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program, or HELP, as it is called. Wayne County's participation in Okra's HELP represents a collaborative effort to redevelop the historic architecture and amenities of Wayne County, as well as create new ways residents and visitors can enjoy what our county has to offer. The cooperation engendered between Wayne County, the city of Richmond, and the towns of Cambridge City, Dublin, East Germantown, Economy, Milton, and Spring Grove will become the new standard that defines future endeavors. This strategic investment plan embodies the work of hundreds of Wayne County residents. It is a realistic representation of our collective desire to rebuild and reinvigorate our important heritage as we invest in a brighter future for our current and future residents and employers. Wayne County leadership authorized application for the HELP grant. The city of Richmond joined Wayne County, and all incorporated towns of Wayne County were invited to join the city and county in creating the HELP grant region. The city and county were joined by Cambridge City, Dublin, Economy, East Germantown, Milton, and Spring Grove. On behalf of the eight communities that made up the HELP region, Jeff Plaster and Beth Fields from City of Richmond completed and applied for the HELP grant. The core team was formed during the application process. Members of the core team were selected based on their knowledge of the community and their interaction with all segments of the population. As local communities opted to participate and become a partner in the HELP grant process, their community was represented on the core team. Four pathways were identified, which was the basis for the development of committees. Those pathway committees with chairs are identified as Strengthening Local Economies, Valerie Schaefer, President and EDC of Wayne County; Health and Wellness, Sherry Harland, Community Outreach Manager of Reed Health; Quality of Place, Mary Walker, Executive Director, Wayne County Convention and Tourism Bureau; and Enhancing Econactivity, Acacia St. John, Program Director, Forward Wayne County. Attached, please find two exhibits that I've given to you. You actually have three now. A third was delivered by Mary Walker from Tourism. The first one is the very large 58-page entirety of the Strategic Investment Plan. That is going to house all of the projects. The Richmond-specific projects are on pages 21 to 31. So when we begin the project-specific presentation, those projects will begin on page 21 of the Strategic Investment Plan packet. You also have a large spreadsheet, which is a two-page spreadsheet that shows a digest of the community's project list and funding commitments, and the third piece is another document that Mary Walker shared that will come up during her part of the presentation. Please feel free to ask any questions as the presentation continues. And to begin our presentation this evening, I want to welcome Commissioner Plaster up to the podium, and he'll begin with a digest of how we got to this point, and then we'll dive into each individual project.
Thank you. Good evening, Jeff.
Hello, Mr. Saunders. I mean.
Colonel Saunders.
Good to see you. Thank you for giving us a few minutes tonight to talk to you about the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. When we presented this same information to the county a month or so ago, it took about two hours, so we've got that same program here for you tonight, so settle in. Just kidding. In fact, as the mayor read.
You'd make a good pastor.
Yeah. As the mayor read through that letter, I was thinking, wow, you just gave my presentation. I wrote that, most of that letter, that was part of the HELP information that we turned into Okra several months ago, so I had forgotten that it was even a page in that plan. But I think the main thing that I want to convey to all of you tonight is that when we understood what HELP could do for us, and I think they chose the acronym very carefully for the enduring legacy portion of that, but also providing us as entities that may or may not know too much about federal government funding, and particularly the early iterations of the American Rescue Plan Act were very, had significant strings attached them. You could only spend dollars on very limited things. And the original plan for HELP was to provide us with HELP, guidance, assistance, to make sure that we spent the dollars appropriately by U.S. Treasury standards, that the dollars we were spending fell into those categories that were allowable. Subsequent to that, the Congress and then the Treasury relaxed those rules so that we could all take what the federal government chose to call "lost revenue," and we could take up to $10 million in lost revenue that essentially has very few strings. Local governments can spend that money on anything that a local government can legally do. So as we went into this process of speaking to the community about what they would like to see us invest in, we had that new information that we could spend these dollars on just about anything that we thought was necessary, we, the people of Wayne County. As we conducted those community engagement exercises, we had 260 or so people that participated in face-to-face meetings. We had 140 together for one of those seven sessions, and there was significant give-and-take. People had very significant ideas about how those dollars should be spent. But as we found, they fell into a few categories that we were able to work with and put together this plan. So housing was a significant issue. Child care became a significant issue. Health of our community was a significant issue. So we were able to take the input from those 900 or so folks, either through surveys or face-to-face presentations, and put them into categories that would fit the four committees that we put together. And those areas of the committees were directed by Okra. Once we had that information, all the feedback from the communities, we worked with four universities, IU, Purdue, Ball State, and Ivy Tech. Each one of them took one of those four areas and worked with the committee that worked in that area. They helped review plans, so it was not just these 900 or so people that gave us immediate input last winter, February, March, April, but they looked at the planning processes that had gone on over the last few years. So for example, the city's strategic plan was reviewed, and elements were pulled out of that that fit with what we were doing with HELP. The EDC's strategic plan was reviewed for that same reason. The Richmond Parks Department's strategic plan. All of that information was folded in, including things like the housing studies that we have conducted over the last three or four years. Some of the small towns had just completed comprehensive planning processes. So all of that was put into this information that we were gathering. It went to the four committees. You've heard who the committee chairs were. They assembled folks that were experts in those areas, but they also included people that represented each of the communities that participated with us. Those groups then identified and prioritized certain areas that they felt were the most relevant and that would move the county and the towns together, and the city, of course, in a positive direction. So we have, we took, the committees took that information and refined it. They then handed off that information to the core team. The core team was comprised of folks who have responsibility in their jobs over the entire county. So Mary Walker from Tourism, Valerie Schaefer from the EDC, Sherry Harland from Reed Health, Dave Jettmore, who is the Wayne County Health Officer. We have about eight or 10 people like that on the core team, and then representatives from each of the eight local governments that are participating. So it's a very, it's a very good group that we're working with. The universities also worked with the core team. The core team's task was to take those prioritized areas of concentration and refine that concept, that kind of general concept, for example, let's say childcare, and turn that into a project that could be quantified. How much do we need to spend to create more additional seats for infants and toddlers is the area that the childcare program in the plan references. So we were able to quantify that. $300,000 was the number we came up with. Each of the projects that you see listed had to have a number associated with it because one of the requirements was for each of the communities who are participating to commit 30% of their American Rescue Plan dollars as a minimum to implementation of the strategic investment plan. And on your spreadsheet over by the side of the name of the entity, so Wayne County's 30% commitment is $3.83 million out of a total that we received for Wayne County of $12.78 million. We actually committed almost twice that, but the minimum was 30%. So each of us have committed 30% for the city of Richmond. 100% of the ARPA funds is $7.979 million, and so the 30% is $2,393,776, which needs to be committed to implementation of the strategic investment plan. As we talked to the communities, we made it very clear that that 30% minimum commitment was certainly intended for each community to spend that within their own boundaries, that there would be no need for the communities, the towns, and the city to spend that money outside of their boundaries, but that it was very likely, as we looked at the projects and what's important to people of Wayne County, obviously, all of those communities are within Wayne County, and so all of those projects are within Wayne County. And Wayne County has dedicated funding to those projects that are within the towns and the city, and you'll see that as we get into the detail of each of those projects. So this has been a two-year process. There have literally been hundreds of people working on this for two years. I want to give a shout out to Beth, Beth Fields, who is not able to be with us tonight, but was very instrumental in helping to write the application almost exactly two years ago. We were able to start the process. We were selected by Okra. That meant that in addition to our ARPA dollars, there was an additional $1 million of community development block grant money that came to our region to be allocated across the projects that are in the SIP. Initially, we spread that out over four communities. When we discovered that a couple of those, including Richmond, was deemed by Okra not to be eligible to utilize those dollars, we took, we took all the money that the county had allocated, and we shifted things around. We didn't change in any significant way how much money was dedicated to each project, but we moved it around so that each of those projects that we are recommending for funding had essentially the same amount of money, it just came from different sources. So you'll see that in the Gorge Project, which was the city's project that we initially recommended for some of the CDBG funding. That was deemed to be ineligible because the city already has some funding from another federal source, and Okra said you can't have two open grants at the same time from the federal government. So we simply moved money, that money, to projects in Dublin and Cambridge City, and we took county dollars, for the most part, that had been allocated to those projects, and moved those to the Gorge Project to make sure that all of those projects that were deemed by the committee to be important were still fully funded. So with that, I think it's time to get into those individual projects, and I think we can direct your attention to the screens, or you've got the same information in front of you, if you'd rather look at your copy of the strategic investment plan. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you as the emcee here, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Plaster. I also want to commend Commissioner Plaster, Valerie Schaefer and her team. City Beth Fields, as he's telling you, played a big role in this, as did County Beth Fields in preparing the strategic investment plan in front of you. So this has been a very collaborative effort. We're going to start, we have a pretty lengthy presentation or project for you. We're going to start on page 21, and I'll begin on that one with the Main Street Revitalization Program. I'll give you a brief synopsis of what you see there on your page. Wayne County will establish a portfolio of Main Street revitalization programs that will help support economic development, community revitalization efforts in our Wayne County Main Street communities. Programs offer a variety of building improvement activities, including mixed-use facade, construction, electrical, and plumbing for building restorations identified in Forward Wayne County's Main Street Structural Feasibility Study. This study assessed 60 Main Street buildings countywide. Some of the key goals that you'll pull out of that are encouraging and incentivizing upper-story residential development throughout our Main Streets, provide opportunities for owners to participate in the revitalization of their properties to stimulate private investment, and to increase property values and increase the profile and density and patronization of Wayne County Main Street businesses and buildings. You'll see down there an investment listing, $1 million coming from city, $1 million from county, and there will be a match component to this piece. And so there will be an application process, a match component, and then the program will be executed as the projects happen, once they're approved through the application process. You'll also find a timeline there on your strategic investment plan showing the finalization of the program details, the call for projects, when the work would begin, and when these projects would be completed. We're going to move through each one of these projects at about this pace, because we have a lot to go through, but at the conclusion, if you have questions about these and want us to go back, we'll be able to do that. We're going to move to our next project, which is on page 22, and this one concerns animal welfare, and I'll ask Commissioner Plaster to come back to the podium.
So animal welfare came up several times in our discussions, but there was not unanimity of thought about what needed to be done in that realm. And so the project that the core team proposed is that we hire a consultant, and we have an expert come in, talk to everybody who's involved in this space, get their input, but also look at that with their expertise, and give us a report on what the different agencies can do to improve the animal welfare system, what the city, what the county need to do to do that as well. So we are talking to the Wayne County Foundation as a kind of neutral party to work with a consultant to look at that process, then the foundation can help arrange meetings with the key players in that space. And we should have a report in 2024 that we can then look at as local governments and decide what action may or may not be required. So that's the project that we're looking at there. And I would say, just very briefly, some of these projects that are joint between the county and the city, even though they're listed as, in the case of what the mayor was talking about downtown redevelopment, a million dollars from the county, a million dollars from the city. We're still working on the details of exactly how that would work. Obviously, the city's dollars would stay within the city of Richmond, but the county's dollars could well be used outside of the city of Richmond, and particularly in those other communities that have been working with us. So even the rules potentially of how that money is allocated, how it's spent, could be different, but in total, there's $2 million on downtown redevelopment in general.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've had a lot of exciting development through our parks planning and Whitewater Gorge Planning and Activation Plan, and I'd like to call Tourism Director Mary Walker and Park Superintendent Denise Ritz. They're going to kind of present this jointly as we talk about Whitewater Gorge Activation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As a reminder, using kind of the historical context and existing site conditions, and really department data and input, and community data and input, a conceptual activation master plan was developed for the entire property, and I believe this was sent to you over the budget session. And if you need it sent to you again, I'm happy to do that. This plan identifies a variety of short and long-term improvements to meet four real key guiding principles of maintain, enhance, program, and broaden, with the main objective to activate. Really, the main focus here is we want to bring people to the gorge and to Richmond and Wayne County, and this activation plan calls out to do just this. And this project that we're talking here, and this investment, will also help with that quality of place. And just as a reminder, the gorge has received from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, from the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, and the National Park Service in an amount of $500,000, which was also matched by the Redevelopment Commission previously, in the amount of $500,000. So we're already working on phase one, right? So we're starting that pre-agreement cost. We've already started design and engineering at the present time, so we're working through that. And there's several projects that will be done in phase one that are very exciting, but that's kind of focused in the southern district. So the activation plan calls out the north, central, and the south districts, right? So we've kind of split them into three districts. And the north has 27 acres, the central 69 acres, and the south 50 acres. So the phase one really concentrates on that 50 acres in the south district. And then in Gorge, what we call 2.0, right, which a lot of these dollars that we're talking about today will be funding, will be the Whitewater Overlook and Fishing Pier, the Test Road proposed launch site, and the Weir Dam launch site. So that will really help us to just catapult into bringing people to our areas. We're really excited about this phase here, and this will be phase two. And then if there's funding left from this investment, we'll be able to really push towards phase three, which is Gorge 3.0, and that'll get us into the zip line phase. So these are things that we're really working to leverage, these dollars, and make them even bigger and stronger than they currently are. And so there's a lot of momentum here with this plan, a lot of exciting. We talk about legacy. The gorge has legacy, and it has so much potential. In five years, I think we're all going to look back and we're going to say, wow, imagine, you know, this, what it was five years ago and what it is today. So very excited about this, and I know Mary's done some thorough data on what it can be tourism-driven and quality-of-place-driven, but really, the county and you and the city here, it's just been wonderful, all of your support going forward with the gorge and tourism has been also very supportive. Mary?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Whitewater Gorge Phase Two Activation Project directly aligns with the Whitewater Gorge Phase Three Activation Project, that when completed, would fully utilize the rich adventure-type resources amazingly right in our own backyard, greatly strengthening our efforts to attract additional tourism and its much-needed economic impact to Richmond businesses, while also creating the types of amenities required to attract and retain young talent now. The paradigm we've known for so long has shifted. People can now work anywhere and choose where they want to live and raise a family. Areas who are able to offer a wide range of amenities that directly coincide with what people are seeking and work to create a sense of place and belonging will win the population game. The Bureau utilizes an AI program called Placer AI. This program utilizes cell phone data and its collection to assist the Bureau in understanding our own visitation numbers and patterns, as well as our competitions, visitation origins, numbers, demographics, future target markets, and more. So for this project, I did a little bit of an intel using our Placer AI, and that's the information that I've given, that Dave appreciate you distributing that to you this evening. I looked at a couple of places. One is the Kayak and Canoeing, which is Morgan's Outdoor Adventure down in Brookville, and the other was looking at phase three in terms of what zip lining can do. So I looked at the Red River Gorge Zip Line in Beattyville, Kentucky. Does anyone know where Beattyville, Kentucky is? Great, you win the prize. I didn't, so I looked it up. It's smack dab in the middle of nowhere. The population is 2,042. And so it was really interesting, because I tried to look at sites that were comparable, and when I did that, I'm thinking, wow, these are small places, but they're generating thousands of visitors. And so that sheet that I gave you, you can look that over and see where the Morgan Outdoor Adventures in Brookville, on a 12-month visitation, is 24,800 people. Red River Gorge Zip Line is 32,050. The visitor origin states in the canoeing and kayaking is 26 states represented in terms of visitation, and 38 states in Red River Gorge zip lining. The household users, all of these stats I found very interesting, so I hope you don't mind me taking a few moments just to share them with you and the audience. The household users, 41.3%. The household users, 41.3% non-family households, 58.7% family households in the kayaking and canoeing, and 60% non-family, with 40% representing households of 2.78. So, we're looking at more than one person. We're looking at families on an average of two to three people per family. The gender is predominantly female, although it's close, 50% male, 49%, and 53% male, 46% in the ziplining. Age, and this is where I think it's really important to kind of note, the age groups that, these are the top three age groups. So, obviously, all the other ages are represented, but these were the top three. 0 to 17, 22%, 18 to 24, 15.2%, 25 to 34 age group is 14% in the canoeing and the kayaking. Conversely, in the ziplining, very similar age groups, they're all right in there, only a different levels. 18 to 24 was 43.6%, 25 to 34 age group, 13.5%, and 0 to 17, 12.1%. The population by category, and I gave all of you, I had to re-look at what the different Gen Alpha, Gen Zs, Millennials, and Gen X represented, so they're on your left. But when we look at these, and we look at the Gen Alpha, Gen Zs, that's 22%, Millennials, 29.2%, and Gen X, 24.1%. So, all of those are in an age group that we are looking to attract in terms of talent and to retain in terms of talent. Household income, I thought, was also very interesting. You can see the top income levels are commensurate in either Phase Two, Phase Three. Looking at 75,000 to 100,000 is 12.3% of the visitation, 60 to 75,000 is 9.9%, 100 to 150,000 is 8.5%, and the ziplining income levels are commensurate with those. Education attainment, these are all things that we talk about when we talk about attracting and retention of talent. Under the ziplining, the highest was the college associate's degree at 28.9%. High school was 23.1%. Bachelor's degree coming in close at 22.5%, and rounding it out was advanced degree coming in at 17.3%. I know this is a little scary, because this is all established via cellphone data. So, it's really quite interesting. But the purpose for sharing these fact-based stats with you tonight is to show unequivocally the enormous short and long-term potential the Whitewater Gorge Activation Project, Phase Two, and when ready, Phase Three could create for Richmond, both in our ability to generate additional tourism visitation dollars and its much-needed economic impact for all businesses. And through these quantifiable measurements, in terms of its comparable user demographics, age, education, attainment, average income, this fact-based data fully embodies the generational market segments that Valerie and her team are working so hard to attract. This project will serve as catalyst for continued visitation growth and further enhance our tremendous potential to attract and retain young talent for Richmond and Wayne County. The Tourism Bureau wholeheartedly believes in this project and its future capacity to generate massive, long-term benefits. So much so, the Bureau is supporting this project in the amount of $50,000, which is really huge for us. We strongly believe many of these projects listed before you in the Wayne County SIP Plan serve as a multi-pronged, multifaceted approach to Richmond's quest for future population growth. As we all know, these ARPA dollars are once-in-a-lifetime dollars, and we ask for your consideration and support to utilize these dollars for these once-in-a-lifetime projects. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, on page 24, you will find the Wayne County Family Resource Center. I was involved with some other key stakeholders when we were contacted by Firefly, which was formerly the Children's Bureau from the state of Indiana, as they sought to open a family resource center here in Richmond. The Wayne County Family Resource Center is being created through that partnership and a large collaboration with Wayne County agencies. So, what is a family resource center? It's a one-stop shop and a safe place for families to go to receive concrete supports, social connections, connection to resources, and other needed services. And a family-friendly resource center will use the protective factors to strengthen families, develop goals, and keep kids and families safe. When we first started helping Firefly find the right location, we visited some of their other locations in Indiana and found they really provide a robust array of services and had some really good connections in the community. You'll find down on the timeline that this talks about assisting Firefly in finding a location. The good news is that has happened. Firefly has found a location in North Richmond, right between Townsend Center and Mount Olive Baptist Church. And so, now they have the next several phases of their development, so they can begin serving the community. They have had a soft grand opening and had a lot of really good response. And so, what you'll find there is the budget and some of the timeline initiatives there, including them purchasing a van so they can be mobile with the services they provide. So, we were really impressed when we saw the way they connect with communities and provide an array of services on a per-need basis, so that the things the community needs, the family resource center has on hand. So, we were really impressed with their services. We'll move to your next project, which is on page 27. Let's get to that page, and that is mitigating neighborhood blight. Elimination of blight was a reoccurring comment received during our in-person community engagement meetings, as well as a repeated suggestion via the online survey results. Neighborhood blight presence of vacant and abandoned properties have negative impacts on affected communities. Blighted properties can decrease surrounding property values, erode the health of our local housing markets, pose safety hazard, and reduce local tax revenue. These funds will be used to increase the capacity of the Unsafe Building Commission to address vacant and abandoned properties. This is something that you hear during our budget process when we allocate dollars to the Unsafe Building Commission, so code enforcement can bring more of these forward for either significant repair or demolition. So, I think this is something you guys already have a pretty solid grasp of, and we would have the Funding Exhausted honor before the end of 2026 through this program. Next up, I would like to welcome Police Chief Britt to the podium to speak about public safety.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on these very important subjects. Regarding the quality of place section of this funding proposal, part of this proposal involves the Police Department. The following is what the Richmond Police Department is requesting from this funding source. And the first item is titled as a rescue vehicle, more specifically, a Bearcat armored rescue vehicle. This vehicle is essential for officer's safety with the challenging climate and dangerous times we live in. As council members, you have heard me speak about needing a Bearcat for many of the SWAT deployments that we respond to as the only SWAT team in this area of the state. This vehicle is needed for safe armored approach to dangerous situations, as well as for cover, concealment, extraction of citizens or officers, natural disasters, or extreme weather incidents. The Bearcat is not an armed vehicle, rather, it's an armored vehicle. It is bullet resistant, up to and including 50 caliber, and it is well-suited to deliver first responders to dangerous environments. And these first responders include police officers, firefighters, medics, and crisis negotiators. I'd like to highlight this need by first making you aware that since 2014, which is as far back as I can go compiling statistics, the Richmond Police Department SWAT team has responded to calls about 99 times, and that's not including this year. That was just up to the end of 2022. I was kind of floored by that when I totaled it up, because I knew we have a busy team, and they do an excellent job. Most of these call-outs involve the presence of firearms at the location they are sent, and the SWAT team has been fired upon twice in the last year, which leaves officers scrambling for cover and concealment anywhere they can find safety. Without an armored vehicle, these officers have to look for ambient cover sources such as trees, other structures or buildings. Thankfully, we have not had any team members injured in these incidents. One of the advantages of an armored vehicle is that in the face of opposing gunfire or any other threat, the team members have a source of absolute cover and safety. In the event an officer or citizen is wounded in a dangerous incident, the Bearcat is an excellent source of extraction as well. The most recent need for an armored vehicle occurred earlier this year at the scene of a neighborhood dispute in which a resident shot his neighbor after a longstanding dispute, with the suspect still unsecured and barricaded in his home. The officers involved had to use their police cars for cover in order to get the wounded neighbor from the scene to EMS staff. After that extraction, a standoff ensued in which officers were fired upon numerous times with little to no cover available. Very dangerous situation indeed. After attempting to establish contact with the suspect to negotiate a peaceful resolution, our efforts to communicate failed, which led the team to deploy numerous less-than-lethal means of ending the incident, such as pepper spray, tear gas, those types of things. Those were only answered with gunfire from the suspect. It became apparent that an armored approach was needed. Our only source of armored vehicle was the Indiana State Police, who responded to this incident with their team, as well as two Bearcat vehicles. While we were and are appreciative of their response, the Bearcats responded from Indianapolis with the activation of their SWAT personnel and deployment of their Bearcats. Their response time was about two and a half hours. That was still much appreciated, but it was a long time standing there, waiting on resolution. During the next few hours, there were 30 to 50 rounds fired at officers, which resulted in returned gunfire wounded the suspect. The gunfire was returned after the suspect fired a 30-odd-six hunting rifle into the driver's windshield of the state police Bearcat, with the windshield stopping the bullet. Another pretty recent example would be armored vehicles that were needed in response to a person firing upon officers in Lynn, Indiana, just a few years ago. Numerous officers were pinned down by gunfire for a couple of hours before an armored Bearcat arrived and allowed to pin down officers to be rescued, and the situation was ultimately resolved with only minor injuries to officers. I would like to note that our SWAT team was the first on the scene, but were unable to rescue the pinned officers due to the lack of armor. The need for armor has been increasing over the last several years, as these situations grow more and more dangerous. The main contributing factors of this escalation is the expanding problem of mental health, escalating violence and crimes committed in permitless carry of firearms, which makes firearms prevalent in most of the events that we deal with. The availability of a Bearcat will serve the city of Richmond's citizens, as well as all residents of Wayne County and surrounding counties when the need arises. Those needs are not restricted to tactical issues. A Bearcat can be utilized in the event of natural disasters, weather emergencies, and anytime first responders need safe deployment, such as hard-to-reach persons in need and civil disorder incidents. Bearcat is produced by Lynn Co. Incorporated, and is the only source of armored high-mobility vehicle. The quoted price from Lynn Co. is approximately $340,000, with a projected delivery of about 12 months after the order. This endeavor has been years in the making. You know, you've heard me speak about this numerous times in past years, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to present this. So, funding for this vehicle has always been a barrier, and I would like to take this opportunity to request Richmond Common Council's consideration and approval of this rescue vehicle provision of the help funding to fill this void in emergency services equipment and to help ensure the safety of our responders. Wayne County Commissioners have approved this project as well, recognizing the benefit for the citizens of Wayne County as well. So, I ask that let's take advantage of this opportunity and consider this expenditure. That'll complete my statement on the armored vehicle. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I think we'll hold questions to the very end, Mike, so.
All right. The second project is personal body cameras and a software suite. This is something that's been a long time in the making, and another one where finances have been a barrier in the past. More specifically, known as BodyCam, several months ago, the Police Department began comparing and studying BodyCam vendors and products. We found that there are two industry leaders in this technology, Motorola and its WatchGuard product, and Axon Technologies. We had multiple meetings and presentations with both vendors. A request for quote was requested from both companies, and after it was determined what our agency required, the specific requirements of the product for 50 body cameras, along with personal mounting plates, cloud storage, spare cameras, online portal software to manage recordings, substantive warranties on the equipment, a five-year contract with all software subscription fees included in the quote, and a midterm equipment refresh. Additionally, we requested that our three interview rooms in Detective Investigative Services Division be equipped with cameras and microphones linked with the same cloud storage and software management tools, and to be included with the quote. Quotes were received from both vendors in a timely fashion, and are as follows. Axon quoted an amount of $386,000, and Motorola WatchGuard quoted $364,374. Both quotes included all specifications requested, and both were quality products. But simply, Motorola WatchGuard was the most responsible and responsive quote, and included the following of 50 body cameras, five extra body cameras of spares, unlimited cloud storage, a five-year no-fault warranty, two-and-a-half-year equipment refresh, which means midway through a five-year contract, they would replace all of our equipment with the most recent or most modern devices. And they also included 50 spare batteries, which would be two batteries per camera, and online portal software. Regarding the interview room, there were three rooms total, two cameras per room, one microphone per room, automated transcription service, which was kind of surprising. We weren't expecting that, but that's quite a bonus. 10 terabytes of online storage and online portal with user-permission-based access. Additionally, we learned that the Wayne County Sheriff's Department had chosen WatchGuard also, and have set up an interface at the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, which enables that office to have portal access to recordings, which are permission-based, this interface capability will be available with our system as well, thus limiting much duplication of efforts regarding evidentiary recordings. This will greatly boost agency interoperability. As previously mentioned, I requested the quote to include all five years of subscription fees to eliminate future budgeting stress. We know if it's electronic, it has a subscription fee every year, so the initial buy-in for WatchGuard, including the equipment in the first year, services $128,798. And combined along with Year Two, Three, Four, and Five, included at $58,894 per year for a total of $364,374. This will avoid us having to adjust budgets to come up with almost $60,000 every year. So, the BodyCam project is necessary to bolster transparency of the Police Department. Although body cameras are not mandated in Indiana, we feel that it's time to take advantage of this funding opportunity in order to be better equipped to effectively provide what the public and justice system demands. This will ultimately be used as a training aid for our officers as well. We have created a policy that will be added to the policy and procedure manual that this project is funded. The policy is recommended by our policy partners at Lexipol, based on standard policies, as well as the International Association Chiefs of Police database best practices. This BodyCam project is another long-term goal of the Police Department, which has been studied for several years and challenging to fund. I would like to take this opportunity to request that Common Council consider the approval of- approval to fund this project by using help funding earmarked for public safety expenditures and take advantage of this opportunity. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I will now ask Denise Retsch to return to the podium as we discuss your next project, which is on page 29, and that is E.G. Hill Rose Garden renovation.
I'm presenting the E.G. Hill Rose Garden project with the improvements the All-American Rose Garden has been able to make over the years. It's really now the park's time to do our part. We maintain the area directly to the west of the All-American Rose Garden, and the Hill family and their legacy is really our number-one priority. That's why the Parks Team has really been an advocate for this area, really preserving the history of our Rose City. Restoration of the E.G. Hill Fountain will be the first thing that we work to do while focusing on the other areas of the garden throughout 2024 and 2025. The fountain, it takes a lot of effort. We have a couple champions, I would like to call them, from our maintenance division that work very hard on that fountain to keep the water in there and to keep it clear. So, there's a lot of restoration that it really needs to make sure that it is fully functional. The E.G. Hill section was dedicated in 1937. It is maintained solely by the Parks Department, and this historical garden is really in need of renovation. The expert team in the Park Floral and Land Sleeping Division really have a good, solid plan, and our seven core goals of the project that are listed here in the SIP plan include: Restore the fountain comparable to its original state from 1937, when the fountain was dedicated in Edward Gurney Hill's name, and that actually looked totally different than it does today. It had a hand-carved limestone six-foot, six-inch bowl, and there were hand-carved birds, and they were all different, and they were nozzle-water features. So, we're looking for those and working with Indiana Limestone on that. We would like to rework the walkways to ensure ADA accessibility and crushed granite, in crushed granite as they were when the garden was first dedicated, want to replant roses that have outlived their prime and identify roses that would have been planted in the 1980s for replacements, install drip irrigation and mulch-all beds, construct and install an arbor gate and fence that can also be closed for private events when necessary, and provide proper signage and labeling for the Hill legacy and also establish that. Remove three identified hazardous trees for both the gardens and also proper light for the rose growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Next on page 30, you will find Townsend Town Homes. Townsend Town Homes will be a 50-unit affordable apartment development on the former Nicholson School site at the intersection of North 13th Street and North G Street here in Richmond. The funding for this project will mostly come from IHGDA through low-income housing tax credits. Ownership would be later determined as an agreement between the developer and the Richmond Housing Authority, who currently owns the vacant land of the site to be developed. This development aims to target individuals within our population struggling to take advantage of opportunities in our community due to many barriers in navigating through the opportunities. Many of these individuals face challenges sustaining the cost of living, including rent, childcare, and transportation while trying to pursue training and education. In addition, it will be a catalyst to future investment in the North Richmond neighborhood to encourage more individuals to live in the center-city neighborhoods and improve the urban core. Redevelopment of the former Nicholson School site was a topic of interest during our community engagement process. It will also address the need for additional housing in our community, particularly for our income levels. This is a project we've been working on for quite some time that I think many of you have been involved with in some capacity. Probably the most exciting part of this one to note, because I know that Housing Authority has already begun interviewing potential developers for this, and I think Chairman Turner has sat in on some of those presentations, as have I. If you look at our investment in this program in relation to the developer investment, you will find that, you know, this is really just a catalyst for the larger project, as we're only a 0.3% investor in the overall project for this site and to bring this much-needed development to North Richmond. We'll move now to page 31, and I will invite Akasia St. John of the Wayne County Foundation to come up and talk about public Wi-Fi expansion in our parks.
Oh, Council, thank you. So, the Richmond projects that we're including for public Wi-Fi expansion complement the ones that are happening in the smaller communities across the county. So, in those five smaller communities, we're doing public Wi-Fi infrastructure in the county park or in their park systems. Some of those are as big as this room, but the need there is for access for residents and as well as just, you know, increasing the availability of internet services and options for our residents. So, in Richmond specifically, we are looking at public Wi-Fi expansions. We had some really great conversations with the Housing Authority when we started discussing this program to see what their needs were. They already have public Wi-Fi in their commonplaces in their locations across the city, and so we said, okay, that we don't need to do it there. We looked at, you know, obviously there's public Wi-Fi already in Elstra Plaza, there is down at the Star Jeanette Building, and then through Morrison Rees Public Library is your other authorized state-of-Indiana public Wi-Fi location. And so, when we were looking at these locations, we said, if it's about gaining access for residents, it's about increasing the availability of these services, we contacted the Parks Department, which run all of, obviously, your parks here in Richmond, and then we also asked Parallax Systems to quote out really all the different locations. And so, the Wayne County Foundation, I will say that we are, as you can see on the screen, it is fully funded by Wayne County Foundation. We had grant dollars to expand it in three locations. We chose three locations across the city of Richmond that really have low to moderate income levels for their residents, and so having this expansion in these areas would really supplement the services and things that are happening there. So, we chose the South Trailhead for Test Road, which would also complement Phase One of happening the gorge activation. So, we did that one. We did the Mary Scott Park, which is on the west side, which obviously services where your community garden is, Dennis Smith School, et cetera. And then we also chose Star Park, which is also a low to moderate income level. So, we're looking at how do we really increase it across the city, and how do we also supplement the other projects that are happening in Richmond to work and expand these services? And so, these are the three projects. They are fully funded by the Wayne County Foundation. The county is supplementing across the other five communities, and so we're proud to say we're going from, you know, six to seven locations across in the county to now we're looking at adding an additional seven locations. And so, we feel like that that's a really good... I also convened the Wayne County Broadband Task Force, and so we've been working in broadband for a couple of years now. And so, this really helps work on that piece of the puzzle as well as how do we continue to provide access to our residents across the county, and at the same time, how do we, you know, make the availability of broadband better for Wayne County in general? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Akasia. I now like to invite EDC President Valerie Schaefer to the podium, and she's going to speak about the overall economic impact of the Strategic Investment Plan and what it means to Wayne County.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you can see from the chart on your screen here, Richmond's investment of $2.39 million is actually leveraging a total investment in these projects of $21.2 million into the Richmond community. These investments will impact a diverse number of areas of the community, such as supporting the livelihood of our downtown building owners and entrepreneurs, enabling quality-of-place initiatives through the activation of the gorge and beautifying the Richmond Rose Garden, supporting local families through the New Family Resource Center, investigating the needs of our animal welfare, which was definitely demonstrated in our public meetings, the need for that, enhancing public safety, which you heard from Chief Britt, and addressing the needs of our neighborhoods through both the removal of blight, but also the new development in a North Richmond neighborhood. The economic impact of these projects is a little hard to nail down because most of them are not creating permanent primary jobs within the community. However, many of these projects will create temporary construction jobs, so they will have an indirect economic impact, and then the induced impact through the services that will be needed in and around the areas of the community these investments will take place will have a ripple effect throughout all of Richmond. The coordination of the development of the strategic plan is really one that I'm very proud of, and I know all of the partners that worked on this plan is very proud as well, because we demonstrated that multiple community leaders, eight governmental jurisdictions, could really collaborate in a meaningful way through the engagement of our residents and us discerning the most impactful projects that were actually attainable to accomplish throughout this development plan. So, these investments, I truly believe, will have a very long-lasting impact all throughout Wayne County, and I thank you for your consideration of the plan today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. As we conclude our presentation, I think it's important to note that we will very soon be progressing through several public meetings to discuss the funding mechanisms for our large downtown investment for our livability feature that we've been speaking about. The 150 market-rate units will come as an investment of $38 million into our downtown. This will be a landmark investment. It will create an economic engine for our urban core, and the projects that you're hearing today all sort of work in concert to support the quality of life that brings that type of investment and more behind it. So, I just think that's an important anchor to this entire presentation as we wrap this up and turn this over to you, Council, for your consideration and hopeful approval, support of this resolution to join the towns around Indiana that have also given their support so that we can continue to move forward with this Strategic Investment Plan. Of course, this team is here to answer your questions, and we'll do our best to do that if you have any. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Lucinda.
A correction on Family Resource Center, it's actually between First Bank Richmond Boys and Girls Club and Mount Olive, not Townsend. It's actually 714, I believe it's 714 North 12th Street is where the Family Resource Center is. So, just want to make that correction.
Thank you. This has been a great presentation. I hope the public will access WCTV, or I hope they're watching it, one or the other, in order that they can become familiar with what we're considering tonight. And in that regard, what's the pleasure of council tonight?
Mr. Vice President, before we move on, can I ask a question about...
Yeah.
I don't know if it's getting too far down in the weeds, but when you talk about developing Main Street, the architecture, et cetera, et cetera, is it strictly Main Street? Is that... If I have a building off Main Street, then I don't, I'm not going to be part of the revitalization?
I think the goal in that particular program that's laid out is for the main streets throughout Wayne County for those individuals that have those businesses and are trying to revitalize local ownership and residential on the second stories, is the main goal is to stay on Main Street. Not to say it couldn't be expanded in the future, but we have to start somewhere in laying out the project so it doesn't get too big for us to manage. If that is successful and we're able to expand that, I'm sure we can investigate that in the future.
Okay. I know I'll get that question. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oler.
My family and I participated in some of these public sections, and I think this is very well thought out, very well done, so I'll be happy to move with it, make a motion that we vote for this.
Resolution number 14.
Resolution number 14, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution tonight. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo.
Aye.
Ron Oler.
Aye.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
Leader in favor.
Resolution passes. Now, Council, would you like... Thank you. Would you all like to take a stretch? Yeah.
Please.
Ten minutes. Okay.
Yay.
I'm calling our meeting back to order after a 10-minute break, and we're going to proceed with our agenda and communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will make this brief after such a lengthy presentation. First of all, we are in the initial phases of funding and assessment of needed easements around the Midwest Industrial Park in relation to the recent purchase of 360 acres. Our ultimate plan, as I know you are all aware, is to provide high-density discharge to what will be a shovel-ready site. So, you're just going to be hearing more soon about funding the needed assessment as we take this large project in small pieces and want to keep you abreast of it as we move forward. Jumping into our community calendar, probably the number-one reason for phone calls and emails to my office right now are about trick-or-treat. Trick-or-treat time is just around the corner. It'll be Saturday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. I want to remind our residents about that and remind everybody to please drive slow and be careful at that time. Lots of excited kids in their masks and costumes all over the city. Again, trick-or-treat for the city Saturday, October 28th, 6:00 to 8:30. There's a big list of city-led trick-or-treat and Halloween activities at our website. Just go to richmondindiana.gov and click on Trick-or-Treat Times, and you'll find a whole list of activities. So, I'll keep my comments short and conclude them there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? Hearing none, we'll move on. We have minutes from September 21st and September 28th of the Board of Works meetings. Any corrections, questions, concerns there? We will not have a report from a department head tonight, and we have no miscellaneous business, so we'll go on to ordinances on first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Goss.
I may or may not suspend the rules and read Ordinance 45, 2023 by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read Ordinance 45, 2023 by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number 45, 2023, an appropriation ordinance amending the 2023 budget.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Emily Palmer, City Controller. Ordinance 45, 2023 is an additional appropriation ordinance allocating the dollars that represent the city's commitment to the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program projects that were presented to you this evening in Resolution 14, 2023, that is approving this strategic investment plan. The total amount of this appropriation is $2,393,776. They're broken down between public safety, downtown revitalization, and then contractual services to allocate to the other projects that you heard this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this ordinance.
Any questions? Hearing none, I will assign this ordinance to the Finance Committee for deliberation.
Mr. President, if I may, if I may, as a reminder, Emily, when we meet on the 6th, can you bring the latest balance figures, reconciled financial reports and balance sheet?
Yes, I am working on wrapping up financial statements, actually, as we speak.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to ordinances on second reading.
Ordinance number 43, 2023, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for a certain parcel from outdoor commercial district to high-intensity industrial district.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Dustin Purvis, Infrastructure and Development. Ordinance 43 is a zoning map amendment for a parcel located on the southeast corner of West Industries and North Salisbury Road. It's requesting a rezone of the property from outdoor commercial to high-intensity industrial, or I-2. If the rezone is successful, the petitioner, Storage of America, intends to purchase the lot from Five Rivers Property to build approximately 72,500 square feet of self-storage facility on the property. Common Council previously referred the request to Richmond's Advisory Plan Commission for public hearing. Notices of the September 27th public hearing were sent to 11 adjacent property owners. One adjacent property owner responded to oppose the petition, expressing their concerns about increased commercial and industrial activity in close proximity to nearby residences. No one from the public spoke during the meeting's public hearing. Planning staff recommended approval of the ordinance, and Plan Commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the rezone to Richmond's Common Council. The Plan Commission's recommendation came with an additional suggestion, however, that the property be rezoned to low-to-moder intensity industrial, or I-1, rather than high-intensity industrial, which is I-2. Rezoning the property to I-1 rather than I-2 would prevent some of the more intense I-2 uses included, which include heavy manufacturing, recycling processing, and incinerators, from being permitted as a future use at the property, which is adjacent to legal nonconforming residential dwellings. The self-storage facility is a permitted use for both the I-1 and the I-2 zoning districts. The Vice President of Development for Storage of America, Tom Fitzpatrick, who is acting as the agent for the petition and is here this evening, stated for the rec. hearing, the September 27th public hearing, that he would have no issue if the property is ultimately rezoned to I-1. The properties adjoining zoning districts of outdoor commercial to the east and I-2 to the north, south, and west are considered appropriate adjacent zoning districts for both I-1 and I-2 per the UDO. The proposed industrial zoning district is compatible with Richmond's future land-use map, which identifies the property to be developed as industrial moving forward. The proposed rezone embraces the comprehensive plan's objectives related to growing Richmond's built environment, which call for improving the city's, quote, "collective ability to deliver attractive sites for development and redevelopment while focusing growth within strategic locations that align with the city's economic development strategies." The surrounding area along West Industries and North Salisbury Roads are primarily industrial, with some agricultural, commercial, and residential properties, along with two impasse solar parks nearby. Richmond's northwest corner is predominantly zoned I-2, which includes the industry-heavy Midwest Industrial Park, along with the adjacent industrial areas along Williamsburg Pike, Progress Drive, and Rich Road. Rezoning this property would permit the proposed self-storage facility, but also ensure that any additional potential future uses on the property will be the kind of industrial-related uses that continue to cluster in and around the Midwest Industrial Park. So, just to kind of back up and recap, the petitioner is requesting the zone of the property to I-2. Plan Commission had recommended rezoning it to I-1 instead, but the proposed self-storage facility would be permitted in either I-1 or the I-2 zoning district. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions you have.
Any questions for Dustin at the moment?
Yes.
Who was that?
Mr. President.
Larry.
Both of us. You said from I-1. I-1, explain that to me one more time. That's...
I-1 is also an industrial zoning district, just some of the more intense uses, like I mentioned, incinerators and recycling processing plants are only permitted in I-2. So, they're both industrial, but I-1 is a little bit less intense.
I-1 is less intense?
That's right.
Okay.
Mr. ...
Larry.
Thank you.
That was my question as well. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Before we open the public hearing, would someone be inclined to make a motion to amend the ordinance?
Mr. President, as Council appoints you to the Advisory Plan Commission, I agree that we want to read, amend this ordinance to read I-1 instead of I-2.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance to read I-1 rather than I-2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for this ordinance, please come forward.
David Carpenter, 400 Richmond Avenue. I am in complete support of this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others in support of this ordinance?
Thank you, Dustin, and thank you for the introduction. My name is Tom Fitzpatrick with Storage of America. This is...
Good evening.
And I have offices in Indianapolis, also in Anderson, and in Michigan. So, this would be about our 41st facility in and around the Midwest. We have grown exponentially in the last few years, even through the COVID crisis that was happening, and it's, we just bring a very nice, clean, and organized product to the market for storage. And we've added also conditions against the residential homes that are in the area, some additional brick facade work and some landscaping there to screen the facility. Plus, there's a security fence there. It's a decorative security fence, wrought iron-looking, six-foot fence for security purposes. Our facilities are all interior cameras for security as well. We have a kiosk on-site to assist people in their rentals of a facility, of a site, and, or of a unit, I'm sorry, and it's, the lights are internal, only the minimum, and we do not have any lights going over the property lines and things of that nature. So, it's just, it's quiet, but it's a needed, we've checked the markets, and the Richmond area has indicated a market for several years, as before the Planning Commission a couple of years ago on the old Palladium Building right downtown here, but we were denied. So, we are back, and we would like to use this site for storage. We appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? I'll close the hearing.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Call the questions.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Aye.
Lucinda Wright.
Aye.
Bill Engel.
Aye.
Jeff Locke.
Aye.
Gary Turner.
Aye.
Jane Bumblelow.
Aye.
Ron Oler.
Aye.
And Larry Parker.
Aye.
Leader in favor.
Thank you. That concludes our business for this evening, having, to my knowledge, no new business to take up. I have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Vice President, before we adjourn, I'd just like, would like to personally and publicly thank Bill Shake for his 47 years of service to this community and to the Richmond Police Department. His contribution to the city's public safety may never be matched, and I just wanted to salute him for all his efforts.
Thank you.
Very good.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 No. I...